At his age.
Get to go on this.
Wait a minute, cut an age here, I'm lost whether I'm wandering or not.
We're good to go on this one.
Okay. All right. We will go ahead and get started. This is a workshop today, it's Tuesday, June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, and we are going to talk about open space ballot issue.
Turn that on. And Jack Draxler is going to be the leader of that, so we welcome everyone here and glad you're here for this to give us the information we would really like to have on it. So, Jack, go ahead.
Do you want me up here?
Please.
Yes, yes.
Well, and I'm just a code. Our, our, our committee has been fairly loose, loose knit and almost by default, the, we three have become sort of the co-chairs. Eric Eilison, who is very instrumental with our, providing our survey, and Steve Daniels, who has just been invaluable with good advice, good thoughts, and always being there to work. So, it's, it's a team thing, so we're all gonna be presenting a little bit at, at, at times. We will have a slide display. I'd just like to begin though by saying thanks for having this workshop. We appreciate the fact that you're, you're willing to take the time. We hope, what we hope to do is a couple of things. We want to be your allies. We don't want to be going around you, under you, or through you. We want to be collaborative with the council in the process of, of, we hope, pursuing a, a bond on the, a bond issue on the November ballot. We want you to have confidence in us, and we want obviously to have confidence in you. And so, we, we'll just plan to work together as colleagues in, in, in the process. So, we, we hope to answer questions. And so, we have some things to present, but then after that, we'd like to have you ask whatever questions you might have that haven't been answered to your satisfaction with this presentation. Does that make sense?
Yep, thank you.
I do, I do wanna stress that the council isn't being asked to raise taxes. The council is being asked to place on the ballot an issue if citizens are willing to, to pay a little bit of extra property tax for open space. And we'll go into some of those numbers with you as to what they might be. We're also gonna present to you a timeline of how we would envision things would, would work. Again, this is our suggestion. You, you folks will make those decisions. I wanna tell you real briefly about a guy that came to our last meeting. This is a man who owns some land out on the Hiram Highway on the west side, just beyond, I can't remember the fellow's name, there's a big log home out there on the right side as you head south, and he owns land directly south of that, on the west side of the highway. And he, he came to our meeting, he said, "I got that land zoned for multifamily development." And, and I thought, okay, good. And he said, but he said, "My wife and I don't wanna develop it. We've heard about the idea of an open space bond, and we'd prefer not to develop that." And of course, that's gonna, that's gonna cost him some money. But he also gets some tax benefits. And we've, we've, I talked with Barb and Paul a little bit about how it breaks down if someone comes and applies to, to have their land placed under open space. We, we're just here to say, you know, what would you like us to do from this point and answer your questions? I've, you know, I spent nineteen years in various offices. I think I have a fairly good feel for, for the electorate. And I, I would just say that I think your constituents want this. But of course, the final say is an election, you know, a ballot issue. I don't think you would get much, if any, pushback if you put it on the ballot. I do think, and I mentioned this to Paul and, and to Barb, I think if you elected not to put it on the ballot, you'd probably get more pushback based on the survey we did and, and what we've seen. So, I'm gonna start out with having Eric start through this slideshow for you. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll give you hard copies to go through as we do, so that obviously, since this is called workshop, we want it to be just that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
This first slide is just gonna be a sample of comments that we've received from people as the survey was conducted. We, we heard things like, "If we don't do it now, it'll be too late." Some people said it's already too late for saving open space. Some people say, "We'll look like Salt Lake County if we don't do something. We need a comprehensive plan now, if not thirty years ago, to preserve open space." And of course, the one that everybody talks about is please preserve the Cache County way of life. Gina?
Jack, can you differentiate, or is there differentiation between open space and ag land? When people say they want open space, do they want visual open space? Do they want trails, recreation open space? Or do they just wanna preserve farming?
We, Eric, can you tell them the, the different kinds of open space? We, we asked them about, I think, five different kinds of open space.
Yeah, we asked, we asked them about five kinds. We talked about the gateways, that was a big question we had. And that is agricultural land, and the term agriculture was on there. Vista's seemed to be a word that really struck them. In other words, like, when I look out, what do I see? And so, a lot of that land is agriculture land. I think that that, that's a fine line. The, we, we talked about trails. Trails was really popular. Wildlife land was really popular. Waterways was really popular. Those things were, it, it was all in the eighty to ninety percent, and it's just whether it was in that eighty percent. And when we say eighty percent, that's eight to ten. They ranked it on an eight to ten with ten being extremely important. That's not anything six or higher. That picks up quite a bit. But I think we showed you the distribution last time. And by the way, I was gone, I had the COVID hit several weeks ago. And so, if there was any questions you had after the survey that I, that we could answer, maybe we could even do that for a minute before. Is there anything that's a, a good one from the survey?
Each question had, you could rank, the respondent could rank from zero to ten. Zero meaning I don't value this, and ten meaning I value it very, very much. About eighty percent valued at eight to ten. It was even as passionate as we are. We were surprised that it was that strong.
The other, the other thing that I found, I covered the island, part of Lundstrom Park, the north part of West Logan, and the bench of Providence. And I was surprised of, and this was a question that was asked in my absence, like, how did that differ? And there was very little difference. The only thing that I would say is, like, areas like, the rural, rural was a little bit higher, just a little bit higher, the rural Cache County on all of those questions than the city, barely. I don't think statistically I could say that it's different, but because we didn't have enough, we didn't have two hundred people from each of those areas. But I was a little bit surprised you'd ask someone on the island in, on two hundred west, I mean, on two hundred east, and they would say sixty dollars is what they would pay when sixty was our max. And so, you're, a little bit, like, it wasn't, it didn't necessarily match exactly the demographic of the, of property values per se. But, okay. So, a question was like, what does the timeline look like? A timeline, if, if this was to go forward, we did the presentation, we're doing the workshop. Bond language and ordinance detail would be July one through July thirty-first, and really, at whatever time that that ordinance would match what the council would want, that was, that's how that would be determined.
And Paul asked a decent sample bond language, and we have that for you.
August twenty-third is the, that's probably the, a date you need to know, is that's the last date for, for the Lieutenant Governor's Office to have length, length, resolution passed, should a, should we come up with a resolution? Yep.
We would hope to do it earlier than that, just for your benefit and ours. July would be a lot better. Barb and Paul asked about an education outreach, and that would definitely be our responsibility. We wouldn't expect, obviously, the council to have to promote the bond in any way, or, or educate the public. We would take care of that. And then, and in fact, we have a number of builders, we have, who are eager to help us with that. Just outreach to the public about, you know, how the bond would work and all those kind of things.
And I, I think, you know, our, our overall view was, one of the values of the survey was, is this a waste of our time? Because we could be doing all this and wasting our time if, if it's just a few people that feel this way. And it was, you know, we found that it was, it was quite different than that. A lot of people felt this way. And, and so, that, that changes. And our, our simple thing is, can the, can the community be asked if they support a bond or not, as opposed to anyone other than, through an election process? July, July through August twenty twenty-two, in, in other words, in these next month, that'd be the Citizen Committee formally organized for education and communication. One thing I found on doorsteps is, it's simply talking to people about it. They don't, they didn't know there was a, a means for them to, they feel passionately about it, but they didn't know that there was a means. So, as we talked to Utah Open Lands, for example, they said, "The best thing you can do is have open neighborhood meetings where people can actually come and ask questions." One thing that's broadly not understood is what a conservation easement is and how it works with a private landowner that, that desires this themselves. And so, some of those things can be addressed as your, as your, as a neighborhood comes together and asks the questions, and they're simply educated on the questions that they have. September twenty twenty-two, legally, Zions was really helpful with this as far as laying out the timeline for us, so that's where these dates come from. Notice of public hearing, submissions of argument in favor and against. And then those end up in a, in a pamphlet that goes out in October for the voters to understand. And then, November eight is the election date this year. And as, as you know, things have totally changed with the mail-in ballots. It kind of advances the time, some of the communication takes place if you're, because people really start submitting those ballots, what is it, about three weeks before? Yeah. Possible bond language, this just comes from some other counties, so I'll just run through this. Twenty-five millions there, twenty million is another number that, that we discussed. Those are, are between thirty and thirty-three dollars a household.
For, for the median price home?
Yeah, for the median price home. Our, the average that we had on the survey was thirty-eight. One thing that's interesting on that average is that many people told us they would go higher than the sixty dollars, but we didn't, couldn't get an average higher because we, we weren't ever, we wanted it within a range that we'd actually proposed, not a, a range outside of something that would be proposed. Shall the count, yeah.
The highest that you had in the survey was sixty dollars?
Yeah. But you, you can see, some of the, some of the comments that we got were pretty routinely above that. The only number we didn't ask is ten dollars because it wouldn't be worth really going through the process of the bond.
Well, we did give them a choice on zero.
Yeah.
And out of, I had one response that said, "I love, I value each kind of open space, but then when it came time to pay up," they said, "Nope, I don't wanna, I don't wanna raise my taxes." But that was only one.
I, I had that as well. And there was twenty total out of a hundred and eighty-three that said zero. Shall the, shall the count, oh, yeah.
Do you think that was from, well, did they, on those responses, where that, was that from because it was my pocketbook, or was there just the, who's going to administer this program? I think it was pocketbook. At least the one that I had said, "I, I feel like my taxes are high enough, I just don't wanna raise them another penny." You know, 'cause there's kind of a, two different things there that, that's why some would say, you know, "I'm tired of, you know, government wasting all my money." Why would I give them more kind of deal, you know?
Yeah, I, I.
If it was all used to that.
I know I had at least one in that category, more than one probably in that category. One that I had where it was like straight across tens and then zero. It was a, it was a lady that was probably eighty-five, and she just was like, "No, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna realize any of it, and I'm not gonna pay it." So. There was, it was kind of interesting with the older generation because some of it was, "I want my grandkids to have a little bit of what we, I, I've had in, in Cache County." And I had another one that was just like, "By the time this comes around, I'm gonna be dead, and it doesn't matter." So, that was the range of, of conversation that way.
So, that sample language, and I talked to John, and he said, "It would be helpful to have some sample language." Now, are you aware, John, at what point do we have to finalize the, the language on the, on the ballot?
That is the twenty-third of August.
Okay.
Because it goes to Lieutenant Governor's Office for that.
The resolution, we need to have that language.
Okay. And you, you would formulate that based on whatever examples you've seen? And then, would it go to the council for them to approve? Obviously, they would, they would have to create a resolution.
And you mentioned that there's bond council, that you have donors that they are willing to pay for that. We'd love to have help with that.
Okay.
That is possible.
Yeah, and I believe this might have come from Wasatch County's bond. So, you know, they, they said for passive or, and active open space, conservation easements, the constructing of recreational amenities, and environmental and wildlife habitat related to, to improvements. So, and then, and then it has the property tax cost of the bond, so someone knows what they're, they have. I think it'd be up to the committee and the pamphlet, it's the for and the, and against pamphlet, to talk about this because this is down ballot in an election. If, a lot of people get down, down there, and they don't know what those issues are. And so, it'd be really up to the, our, our communication as what this is. In the survey, it was asking about how important the things are, and then, and it also asked about what you'd pay for that. Someone doesn't necessarily have that connection as they go and they get this, shall the county of, of, shall the county council, dah 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 dah. It's, you know, at that point, it's just, so, I, I just learned from working with, with campaigns that.
Do you know the cost on the, on the ballot?
I believe this is, this goes on the ballot.
And I think we should.
Yeah.
I think we should too.
Because people need to know, I think Gordon is the one who mentioned it last time. They need to know, hey, this isn't free. It might only be three bucks a month, or it might only be five bucks a month, but there's still, yeah, there's a cost.
A comment I had on doorstep, a couple of doorsteps was, "For that much, my house is probably being appreciated by that much by having a few extra trails around and a few, and open space." By, you know, by, my house will appreciate by what I'm actually paying for this particular bond, so. Okay.
My opening comment, just to get my voice warmed up a little bit. If you support this bond initiative, you won't be raising people's taxes. You'll be starting a conversation. And the large message that I get out of our survey is this is a conversation people wanna have. If in the end, they decide they don't wanna vote for it, that's their choice. And, but you're not, you're not making, you're not forcing them into any choice. You're convening a conversation around a topic that is clearly on people's minds. So, that's, that, that's, I, I think, an important way to think about it. You're not raising taxes. But we did wanna give you sort of a sense of how this, this program would unfold. And, and it would be informed by a number of other approaches to this. First of all, I think the RAPS Tax Board and how they work could give us some important insights. I think the ways that other counties in the state manage this and make it work would have some other important insights. But we wanted to put a couple of things down for the sake of today's conversation. All right. So, our judgment is that it's gonna take a half year or so to, to get the board organized, get it selected, have its administrative process, build its selection criteria. Now, that may, your judgment is, might be that that's a little too quick. It'll take longer than that. Well, with your advice, we can slow it down. And in large measure, we're functioning as your staff. And if you think this starting point is a little too fast, then advise us, and we'll slow it back down. But then, we imagine there being three rounds of competition that occur over time. And by the way, for the sake of trying to beat rising interest rates, we'd wanna float the bond as soon after it passed as possible. We don't wanna wait a long time. We wanna get that money and the interest rate locked in. So, we'd have three rounds of funding that would occur over time. And each round is, would consist of publicizing the, the criteria, making sure that people know about the criteria, and have a couple of months to prepare an application. They, they would go before the board, the applications would go before the board, the board would make recommendations, a priority ranking, kinda, which ones do we like? Then they would go to, before the city council for your selection. You would ultimately make the choices as informed by the criteria and the board. Due diligence and the, and the development of the, the agreements. In, in my experience working with Bariler Land Conservancy, that can take eighteen months or two years. In part because if you're trying to leverage off other people's money, like federal money, you've gotta go when their windows of application are. That delays things typically. These processes can take a long time. Two years is not unrealistic. We, the, the board would report back to the city council on how things are going, and I think there would really need to be an opportunity for formative evaluation and dialogue about how to improve the program. I mean, programs need to continually be self-reflective on what's working well. So, after each round of applications, there needs to be a pause and say, "Okay, what do we do better the second time? Were our criteria unclear? Were our deadlines unrealistic? How do we improve the program?" So, there'd be an opportunity for, for program modifications and revisions. And then you would do the second round. You'd publish a new set of criteria that might be modified a little bit, you'd solicit more proposals, you'd go through it again. I could imagine doing each of these rounds taking eighteen months. And you would have the projects for the first one still in process while you were soliciting applications for the second ones. So, you'd have layers of this going on. Because you wouldn't wanna wait for the second round until the first round was gone. It would just be too slow. It would be too cumbersome. So, if you can, can do rounds while you're working on them, then you're, you have an opportunity to move a little bit more quickly and stay ahead of development pressures and try to maximize your money. So, that is a, sort of a, a preliminary draft way to set this up. But man, we'd love this design to be informed by you guys' knowledge and experience in working with these kinds of programs.
One, one thing too, as the council, there could be objectives that you have. For example, we wanna connect a few different communities together with, with some trails. Well, that could be, that's where solicitation of applications comes in, where you'd be like, if it happened to be from Sardine Canyon into the valley or something, a trail system, you could say, "Okay, Cardy, will you go out and see what it would take? Who are those landowners, and can, can we solicit applications for that process to take place? We've got the money." And then, if it comes in too high, you voted the Amazon no, or the, or the board voted the Amazon no, if it came, came in where you wanted it. You know, that, this is a way to facilitate some of the goals that the, that the council might have.
And you need, you need two things. You need people to be able to come to us and say, "I've got some property I'm interested in preserving." But we also need to be able to go out and say, because there's a certain goal we have, without any force at all, without any condemnation, let's go to people, say, "Would you be interested in, in, let's say, a conservation easement?"
Or a right-ofway.
Or a right-ofway, uh-huh.
Yeah.
So, you know, it, it could work both ways. And in other places, for example, Garden City, you've all seen the trail up in Garden City. That one was just a combination of people coming in. Most of the time, people came in and said, "Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to dedicate a right-ofway for the trail." In a couple places, the city count, or the, the city council or their designees went to people and said, "Our goal is to have a trail all the way through the town. Are you, are you willing to work with us?" And obviously, they did, because you've all seen probably that trail in Garden City that goes from, what, Harbor Village down to Pinkerville. People love it, people get, they, they use the heck out of it. So, anyway, that's kind of an example.
I'd really like to extend some time for questions and discussion at this point. And, and, and see what's on your mind. I'd like to enlist your expertise to make this a program that if it's on the ballot, when people ask you about it, you say, "Yeah, we have our ducks in a row on that one."
I have a question. You know, you talked about going out and soliciting people for right-ofways or yields or whatever it is that you call it. We wouldn't have to hire somebody to go out and do that, would we? We'd have, it'd just be the people that are on the board that would take care of that. So, there's no extra cost involved in any of that.
We think it's really important to keep all the administrative costs as low as possible.
Okay.
So, you use whatever kinds of networks there are. I mean, for example, make sure that we, we communicate to the county ag agent real clearly that this is an opportunity. And then, when that ag agent is out working with people, they might say, "Have, hey, have you heard about or seen?" Or whomever. I, I think, I, I think we use local grassroots much more than, than having to throw a bunch of money at it.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I have a question for you. Have you guys considered any other avenues to preserving ag land or open space rather than just a bond? Do you think there are any other avenues or methods? Or methods?
The only, the only other alternative is, is big time donors. I've mentioned to Bart and to Paul, the tree farm up in River Heights.
Zollinger's.
Zollinger's.
Yeah.
They, they went to a, a program that the state has that we hope to leverage with. In other words, if we contribute two hundred thousand, we would hope that Lee Ray McAllister Fund could contribute two hundred thousand. And we would hope that federal programs could contribute a couple hundred thousand and so on. You, you lathered that. And in that case, they just went directly to Lee Ray McAllister and, and, and they were able to get it funded. But the property owners have to contribute usually about twenty percent of the assessed value. And that, that does create a tax benefit for them, but it, it's also one-fifth of the value of the property. But yeah, that's, you know, the, the alternatives are, are pretty slim. Just to find a, a zone somewhere or, or to try to get all your eggs in one basket with somebody like Lee Ray McAllister.
If we, if we approve to put the ballot, the bond on the ballot and it's approved, does that keep us from using the Lee J. McAllister funds?
No, not at all.
It enables us.
That's more able to because a lot of that requires some matching money and stuff like that.
Okay, so if the bond is approved, then we have that other that we can use also.
For example, suppose you had a property that you thought you could get the rights that you wanted for a million five. You go to Lee Ray McAllister, you ask for a million five. They do their internal funding competition and they say, we'll award you a million. Well, now you're a half million dollars short. But if we had our own half million dollars through this bond, that covers the gap.
Okay.
The other, one of the reasons that I really like, would like having some locally controlled funds in this arena, it means that we're not beholden to anybody else. That we're not beholden to their criteria and their, and we're not beholden to their political agenda or decisions. This last legislature did not put a dime into Lee Ray McAllister. Not a penny.
They tried.
Pardon me?
They did try.
They did try, but they didn't get in, 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 okay? And so, if we're counting on that, then we're, we're subject to their preferences. We have our own funds that we control. We can leverage them or choose to use them however. I think having some local self-determination in this arena is not a half-bad idea. As opposed to relying completely upon state or federal money. Any other questions in particular?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Nolan.
So Jack, there's a question on you said market value and the owner gives up twenty percent. Where are we deriving that market value? If you go to an appraisal, it's the full and maximum use of what the property is versus if it's farm ground or whatever else. So when you go soliciting from private land ownership, whatever else, are you saying, hey, your farm's worth this? You give us twenty percent of the farm value? Or are you saying your farm's worth this if it was sitting in houses? Do you see where I'm headed there?
It's typically appraised at highest and best use.
That's what I'm looking at. The board, who makes up the board? And, and as it's been talked about, the decision finally comes back to the council, as I understand.
Recommendation. Recommend, or maybe a list of recommendations.
So, do we know the board make up or who's making that? I mean, because...
None of my questions, yeah.
That's up to you guys.
Sometimes that's appointed by each of you would appoint someone to that role. Just looking at other models.
The RAPS, the RAPS Tax is a good example.
Would you go back to the bond description or wording? Because it said in there constructing of something? I'm like...
Recreational amenities?
That could eat up a lot of that twenty or twenty-five.
Yeah, and this is someone else, you know, this is language from someone else.
So that's not the intent here is to construct recreational amenities?
The, I, I think they're... I think they're...
Well, that's why I wanted, that's why I'm saying...
That's a good point. I think we should not put that out.
Exactly, because I don't want this bond to be constructing
Parking lots.
Parking lots or a boat ramp or something else out there. But I'll also say, I use water from a canal and I pay for that. Now I'm being told my canal is going to be turned into a trail. And I'm not too happy about that because that goes right through my ground and I'm not wanting Gatorade bottles and diapers sitting on my ground.
Well, I think you're raising a darn good point. We, we want to be careful that the language doesn't, it's not misleading. And to me, that's misleading a little bit.
That's where... What it does, it crosses over to what the, a lot of the RAPS funding does. And we don't want to have...
And we actually like double cap and all that kind of stuff, so. We'd be better off to use the word trails maybe or something like that. But recreational amenities is too...
Trails also comes out of RAPS.
That could be buildings, like you're saying, it could be any number of things. And it could cross over into what RAPS already addresses. Yeah.
And, and this would be really, the goal would be to fine tune this to what? I, I mean, if we looked at it, you know, we, we really, based on the, the polling is, and when we talked, for example, to Carly, I was like, well, how does this serve us as best, as, as the trails person? And she said, I can usually get money from some of these other sources for constructing it, but I don't have access to get that certain, you know, right of way somewhere. That gives the landowner the ability to choose yes and no. And then I have, then I can go to some of these other sources for the actual building and construction in the trail itself.
Well, we very much appreciate you spotting that. Because that's not something we want to leave in there. Because when I read that, I also see, see things like community parks. And that's not what we're talking about here. So that's a, that's a good catch, thank you.
The other question is, is once this is put in by a family farm or whatever else, is it always there or is there a way to pull that back out and how does that happen?
Most of the, most of the easements, with the conservation easement, the matching agencies, the federal agencies, Lee Ray McAllister and so on require that it be in perpetuity. It, it needs to be permanent.
Yeah, yourself...
This came up in the legislature when I served on the natural resources committee because we oversaw Lee Ray McAllister. And there were members of that committee that said, hey, I think, I think you should be able to withdraw it after ten years or twenty years. And people said, well, that pretty much defeats the whole idea if it's not in perpetuity. And again, it's totally up to the property owner. We don't have any, we don't have any condemnation power. We don't have any coercion. But what, what is surprising to me is how often property owners are willing to...
But that leads me to this point.
The question was, was open space versus agriculture? So if farmer turns it into agricultural, and I don't know what ramifications you're saying, but that becomes open space, the public can use it, then Father John dies and Little Timmy and Little John don't want to farm it anymore. Are you saying it's got to be rented out to go to the other farmer? I'm just wondering that transition there, does that make sense? If it's going to stay in farm?
Yeah. And, and again, a lot depends, and Steve can address this too, but a lot depends on the language of the conservation easement. You know, if usually, property owners who participate want their land to stay in agriculture. But it's, it's not agriculture...
And I agree, but if Father John dies and Little Timmy says, suck rocks, I'm not driving a tractor.
It's not, it's not, it's not open space versus agriculture. Agriculture land is, actually enters into this equation when it meets the goal of the council and the goal of the, of the open space board. You know, it, it's, Steve mentioned, it takes time. It takes time to work it through.
But usually, any easement that you're giving up in perpetuity, that means that that, what, whoever owns it, whoever owns it down the road, that is all, that easement sticks with it. And, and that's the limitations. And that's usually the limitations on what they'll pay.
And it makes it desirable to some...
You know, it says, if the easement carves out and says, this is the agriculture portion you could find in the, this is going to be for wildlife and that, whoever purchases, whoever owns it, whoever it may be, if that easement is in there, then they're going to maintain that this is the portion that will always stay agriculture and they're going to be able to farm and so forth. It's just taking little bun, the little sticks and the bundle of rights from property ownership. It's pulling that and holding that somewhere else, which then puts limits as to what can be done.
And I understand that part.
So...
But just as we're seeing in Cass Valley, the definition of agricultural becomes wide. I could raise elk on it. I could put reindeer on it. I could put hemp on it. So it almost seems to me you would have a definition of what becomes agricultural on that side. Do you see what I mean? Versus tilling the ground for grain or hay or corn or whatever else is accepted as agricultural under the Department of Agricultural definition.
And, and a lot of that is defined by who is putting money into it. Is it, is it the natural, from a federal agency standpoint? They, they, there are certain monies based on what you're doing with it, so that...
Then that comes back to timing, who's ready to put money in as to what that easement definition becomes.
Exactly.
But a good example of what might be different is, you know, we, the, the Wellsville group's been a, a little bit involved coming from time to time to the meeting. And, you know, their concern is the hundred and sixty-three houses or whatever in Sardine Canyon, as you go through Sardine Canyon. They've raised some, they've got some commitments for some money if they could buy it from the developer. And I don't know where it stands right now, I'm just relaying this. But, you know, in their mind, this would be wildlife, there's a little bit of agriculture on that piece along with elk migration. And they said, and we'd be interested in putting trails on it as, as well. So something like that could actually hit multiple marks. And wouldn't necessarily look like just a family farm.
And going back to your question about how does this impact errors? Best practices in, in the, in the land conservation world is if you're working with an elderly landowner and, and they have either a trust or will in place that says upon their demise, their land would go to their descendants, you make sure that you get the, the signature of those descendants on the letter of intent that starts the process, that they're not surprised by it. Because they, the, the elderly farmer is in fact selling part of the value of that land in perpetuity. And they, they, the kids need to be informed of it and the kids need to understand it. And, and I have been part of those conversations. And the, the point you raise is an, an important point. And it is dealt with day in and day out in the land conservation world of making sure that there's no surprises. This is a willing buyer and seller thing. And sometimes the kids have a great commitment to that piece of land the way it is. And, and, and...
So there's no deal? If, if they, if everybody's not on board?
Yeah.
See, where I come from, that's my ground, I'll do it. It's not my kids' ground until I'm dead, so.
And, and that's fine, but, but you at least, you at least want to make sure that the kids are informed that the process is happening.
I haven't seen them out moving pipe with me, so.
Other, other questions or thoughts or recommendations, how we improve this? Yes, sir?
So I have a couple of questions. I like your idea about convening a conversation for this. But I think people need to really understand what this means. And you brought up the Wellsville folks. You know, you got the hundred and sixty-five house subdivision. And we use that picture to show all of this wonderful green space, this big vista as you drive into the valley. Are people really going to think, hey, if we do, put in twenty-five million dollars, I keep that view? And that is not accurate. Not in any way, shape or form is that accurate, correct? And so...
Even leveraged.
Even leveraged. I mean, even if you, even if you ran the table on every matching dollar, twenty-five million isn't going to keep that picture looking any worse for that picture.
Well, that's part of the education effort, Paul, is you, you, you help people to see, now look, it's not always going to be that open. We're just hoping to preserve some of it because it's never going to stay like that.
So, so to that point, with this being a pretty complex thing, complexity is a subsidy for the folks that understand it. How can this process be abused?
Be abused?
Abused.
That's a good question.
That's a great question.
Or taken advantage of to personal enrichment for the folks that understand how to navigate this. And, and kind of the detriment to the community.
One of the ways in which it could be abused is if there are kind of sweetheart deals coming out of the board that, that there's projects pre-selected or there's, that the selection process is somehow cooked. I'd hate to see that. Now, I think we've designed some mechanisms in there to minimize that. For example, clearly publicizing the criteria. Making, you know, having it be a competitive process.
There's also a scoring system called the LEESA. Land, land evaluation and site assessment. Where instead of relying on the good old boy type thing, there's a, there's a, a set ranking process where you score properties. And, and that takes it out of the pat on the back type approach. If you ask how it could be abused, we should also ask how can it, how can we prevent abuse? And that is by having a well-defined process, a well-publicized process, and a ranking system that is objective but not subjective.
There'd be a lot of responsibility on the county council to make sure that those that are nominated for those boards, that they are vetted and that they are the people that are entrusted.
Sure, that's one of the checks and balances. So you have initial applications, then you have your board evaluate them, then they come to the council with recommendations, and the council is another check. About, and balancing, okay, out of your three recommendations, we like one room and we don't like two of them. However you decide.
But you, you are absolutely right. The quality of people that, that are on this board will determine to, to some considerable extent the impact of the program. They need to be, they need to be knowledgeable, they need to be diligent, they need to be connected. The quality of the people on the board is going to make a difference.
Um, it sounds like with a lot of these things, there's a lot of legal issues to be addressed. You know, if we've got easements and different things going on. Who handles all that legal stuff? Do we have to hire outside legal sources or can we use our county attorney? How, how does that handle?
That's one of the costs of a given project are the legal costs, the accounting costs, the recording costs, whatever. That's one of the ingredients of each property. We have to, we have to know what, what will those costs be? But yeah, that figures in. If you've got a million dollar property, you break it down by percentage. A certain percentage of that needs to be the, the minstern cost.
And, and I'd be very open to, to the county attorney's perspective on what is the most cost-effective way to get competence, competent legal guidance on this process?
Just to, to see the question I'm not talking to.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be additional work.
Right.
The question would be, would it be more cost-effective to build it into the cost of each project and have outside counsel do that as part of the cost of each project? Or to eventually have more civil attorneys or other civil attorney that would handle that?
But these are complicated legal transactions and you need somebody looking after your interests who knows what they're doing. And it's fairly specialized. And there wouldn't be enough work to hire somebody permanently, full-time. So you're going to end up retaining pretty specialized outside counsel. Speaking as an aside, Bear River Land Conservancy hires the legal staff for Summit Land Conservancy on an hourly basis to do our legal work.
And is that, that cost isn't covered by the bond or anything?
Which cost?
The cost of the legal counsel?
Oh, I think it would have to be, it would be covered by the bond.
It would be? Okay, it's covered by the bond.
It's part of the due diligence costs, yes. Those would not be additional burdens.
Okay.
I got one question. A lot of these, these open spaces, there's a, there's, there's kind of one area, there's, there's different ways of doing it. Remember, we've talked about a lot of these. It's one that I've heard a lot of people... Remember, we've talked about a lot of these. It's one that I've heard a lot of people just say, well, let's just zone it. And when, I feel like when, when government does those kinda things, we just go in and we just say, this is the only zoning that you'll ever have. We're gonna just zone you out of any kind of development. That's called takings.
Yeah, and, and then you leave.
Then you really lose a lot of, then you are infringed on a lot of private property rights at that point.
Absolutely. So if it ends up in court, they've ended up in court.
Oh, yeah.
Or they tried to do it by zoning.
But there's, there's kinda that way. That, that's kind of another way of being able to do this, but I'm not in favor of that at all. But let me, let me bring up one of the, a lot of these easements, these conservation easements, a lot of these other things that come about. A lot of those parcels in, there is no taxability on those properties. They lose. Basically, they are free of taxes at that point. Now, they're-
Can you say tax rate?
A lot of conservation easements, they'll, there's no revenue to a county, to an entity whatsoever on those parcels when they're put into a conservation easement. Then the taxable amount that was received from those properties, it has to be made up somewhere else in a, in a county budget, city budget, whatever it may be. And so that's an indirect cost that all of a sudden, oh, now we, they say we won't raise tax. Well, when you start putting all these open spaces, which people love, then they not only will pay for the open space tax, but when those are taken off of the tax rolls, then they will, hey, either that or we've gotta lower our budget, which I would suggest we do anyway. But, you know, we somehow, it's, that amount's either gotta be made up or we gotta take a change within the budget itself.
You know, going back to the point that was made earlier about that this program is not big enough to change that picture in large. I don't believe that this program would be large enough to take so much property off the tax rolls as to have a measurable impact on county budget. In particular, my understanding is that residential development actually is a net cost to county tax rolls compared to the services that they demand. So while I agree with your point that there would be a change in county receipts going forward, county revenues going forward, I, I doubt it would be measurable. Cause remember, growth is still gonna occur. We're not anti-growth. We're just trying to spot a couple of key places that matter to the community, like the white barn going into, into Park City. You know that barn you see? That's now owned by the city, but it came in through a program like this. And so finding those spots that are us as Cache Valley and saying, as growth changes, we want these places and values to persist. They're worth investing in. That's, that's what we're trying to do. I, I, I wouldn't back a program that was gonna change the trajectory of the county in huge writ large ways. It, that, that's just too much control. I'm, I wouldn't be comfortable with that. But if, if we could spot those places that help define who and what we are and say, this is legacy. Change is inevitable. Legacy is a choice. What do we choose?
So, question right here, please.
One of the gentlemen have, that's come there means a business owner and he talks about all the people that he brings in to try to recruit into the valley. And, you know, for either his clients or whatever, and he talks about the impact coming into the valley has. And he wants to keep that type of impact. So, you know, there's certain things that we've at least seen come out from the state talking about what people value and why they put businesses in certain places and, and why they invest in certain places. And some of these things are some of those same, are, are some of the same things that come out as what people value. So there could be actually an increase in property tax value and business taxes that the county collects if we preserve some of this. Now, that's quite, you know, that'd be really looking at a lot of detail that I, I don't necessarily have access to. But I, I think it's been quantified, at least the outdoor recreation, the open space type of thing, happened to quantify in terms of, by some, in terms of what value they have. I know that Jack has brought up as a, as a, in doing an evaluation of properties, that if you have, if you're close to a trail, that increases your property value by-
Fifteen to twenty-five percent. I mentioned this to Paul and Barb. It's like being adjacent to a golf course. People sometimes think a, a trail will reduce the value of the property.
I'm just sitting here thinking, if I bought a house next to a trail, I'm gonna be pissed that everybody's walking by, so it'd take my value down.
Actually-
I'm looking at it differently.
If you, and that may be your view and that's, that's certainly legitimate. But if you look at the market, lots or homes that are along a trail sell for more.
We have-
Actually sell for more. It's just like golf course. I mean, if you're on, if you're on a golf course, you need to think. I personally, I wouldn't wanna be on a golf course. I don't want the golf balls flying into my yard. But if you look at the market, lots and homes along a golf course sell for fifteen to twenty-five percent more.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, you do know, and we all have watched it happen, as soon as they announce a temple, all the, all the surrounding property goes up.
That's true.
You know, and that's just the way it is. And we get talking open space. I guess in College Ward, we got one of the most important places preserved in Dr. Pierce's barn. Don't you all agree that that's gotta be preserved, that, that pasture, so people can pull off and take pictures of it?
I thought it was the Zilis dairy.
No, it's, we, we get that, we get that designated as an open space. And I'm close enough to it that my property value will go up because I'm by, I'm in College Ward.
Yeah? Um, one, one more quick question. So let's say we get this, we do the bond, we, we get the money coming in, we set the parameters, and we can't force anybody into the program, and we've set the parameters for what we wanted, and we don't get any takers. And now we're sitting on twenty-five million bucks. What do we do with the money?
I don't think that would happen at all.
Well, I mean, you know, we'd expand it and expand it until we, we can pay for it, but then, I mean-
The best thing, all you can do is look at other places that have done it.
Place there would be pretty important.
The, the funds have been snapped up pretty darn readily. You know, that's a, that's an if, that's a possibility, but I, I don't-
I don't believe we've ever seen it happen, have we?
That would happen.
I don't think it'd happen. But I have one point. When you talk about abuse, what Paul brought out, and when I think about the article that come out about housing and changing zoning, there's where I start seeing some abuse. Is we've gotta watch zoning and what's coming in as far as what somebody does for open space and everything else. Does that make sense?
Yeah, cause I mean, what, what we were just talking about, right? I have a hundred acres. And all of a sudden, I put a U section in that hundred acres into an ag easement. I put some money in, but I get a huge tax break. And now all those lots that went dense around that U-shaped open space have increased in value exponentially. And we have made a sweetheart deal with somebody.
Most of the people who do conservation easement funding are onto that trick. And if you own a piece of property and only put part of it in a conservation easement, that's a red flag. And they are on you like bird dogs on a quail because they know that trick. And so-
So how do we get out of this?
Pardon me?
How do we avoid it?
They, they just won't grant the conservation easement structure like that.
So we're watching where there are flood plains. We're watching where we have FR forty forest and everything else. And that limits or changes the dynamics of the value based on how it's zoned to begin with, right?
Cause it would, it would define what highest and best use is.
So I'm, that's why I'm saying when we talk about abuses, I think you gotta work very closely with what the zoning and everything else is and potential in it.
Exactly. And, and that's why these things are really torturous deals to set up. I mean, being on the board of Bear River Land Conservancy and watching us try to do these, doing them really well, takes a, takes a surprising amount of time. It takes really good, takes really good work.
This isn't, this isn't a, a, a quick scheme.
It, it, you need to be really thorough. You need to talk about the heirs. You need to, need the, the two appraisals you do of kind of highest and best use and sort of retained use to the rights. That difference, man, that needs to be a really good appraisal. And, I mean, they're slow and expensive and, and you, you really need to be careful. To protect everybody's interests, these are important deals. And so to protect the taxpayer, to protect the landowners, protect everybody, they need to be well-done. And so the quality of the board, the quality of the help that they're using, it, it, doing it right is not a simple task. It is a task worth doing well.
Ask a question. Do you see the world of matching funds out there as being strong? McAllister, federal or whatever else, do you see what I mean? Money that's gonna come in to match this bond?
I do. Now, Lee Ray McAllister is very subject to political whim, frankly. And I served on the committee that, that funded Lee Ray McAllister. One year, there might be three million budgeted to, to Lee Ray McAllister. And the next year, they might not get anything. So it, it fluctuates. The federal programs are pretty steady. Nature Conservancy, Trust for Public Land, some of these organizations are fairly consistent. You know, I guess no one, nothing's guaranteed.
No, but I just wanna let these guys know there's, there is a strong source of funding to match against this, with this. So that we're not-
And one, one thing you see is Franklin County get, doing a whole lot more than we are, that they've got Pacific Corp that-
They're protecting the Bear River.
Well, they, they put, they're required to put a certain amount in. And that ends up being that little seed money that gets all the matching. We just don't have the seed money in, in this county for that. But also remember, we're, we're not just looking at easements, you know, anything from a, a right-of-way for a trail to go from Richmond to Providence to get people off the highway, you know, those types of things. Wouldn't necessarily, they'd be matched in a very different way or they'd just be like, you know, this is just something we wanna do as a county.
Our legislators tried to, this past session, to actually try to take all the rollback taxes from all the counties and put it into the McAllister fund there. That, that was killed.
Yep. It's interesting that when the rollback tax was passed, called the green belt tax, when someone's got their land in green belt, they take it out and they give it up, develop, then they have to pay a rollback tax. And that, when, as it was written, was supposed to preserve ag land. But yes, who gets most of their rollback tax now? School districts. Which is not a bad use. I mean, education is important. But in many ways, it's not being used the way it was intended. And that's something, like I say, Dave, that's something that's very difficult to change. That's because the legislature-
Okay, um, thank you, you guys. Um, we appreciate you being here. We do need to go ahead and close this down. But thank you for the information. And I think it's been very informative for all of us. So we will decide, yeah, we will dismiss and go from there. Okay, thank you so much.